Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the definitive debates. My name is Mark Snyder and this is Jeff Pickett. And we are going to be doing the debate first with the school committee and then we'll have a debate with the selectmen after that. So make sure you're glued to the set. Do not move. Stay right where you are. This is all to prepare you to be an educated voter in the April 5th election. Make sure you vote. So there were four candidates who passed in papers to be in the school committee race. One of them, Pat McNeil, has withdrawn as a candidate because she is moving to East Sandwich where all the cool people move. Amazing, isn't it? So we are going to be having three candidates with us and in the order that they were selected by a card drawing. First is Erdem Yural, second is Anita Hill, and third is Joe McDonough. That is the order that will be in their opening statements. And then when we close the statements, we'll have the reverse order. Just some parameters of the debate. Opening statement is 60 seconds. Response time per question that would be asked by Jeff is 90 seconds. And the rebuttal time is 45 seconds. And Michael Wigder is here. He's going to be the timekeeper. Michael Hammond is on camera. CJ Mullin, Dave Young in the control room. We want to thank them all. And let's begin the debate now with Jeff Pickett. Jeff?
All right, well, let's start with the opening statements. And what we were hoping to have in your opening statements was 60 seconds to introduce yourself to the voters and to also answer the question as to why you are running in this camp, this election.
So Erdem, you're first.
Good evening, Stoughton parents and residents. It is a great pleasure to have this opportunity to speak to you. People call me Doc because I earned a doctorate degree in aerospace engineering from the University of Michigan. I have a child attending the middle school and another at Hanson School. I own and operate a well-known scientific consulting business in Stoughton. I am a proud member of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. We all want to improve our town's economy. We would like companies with high-paying jobs and new families move to our town. Having great schools is a must toward achieving that goal. I'm running for the school committee because I am not satisfied with the current state of administering education in Stoughton schools. I am not afraid to say we can do a lot better and we must do a lot better. My priorities are seeing through the expedient completion of the new high school, improve student achievement in Stoughton schools, and improve the college and career readiness of our kids.
Thank you. Anita?
My name is Anita Hill. I've lived in Stoughton for a little more than 20 years. My husband, Rick, and I moved here in September of 1995. Both of our children have gone through Stoughton schools here, from kindergarten through 12, and graduated from Stoughton High School. My son graduated in 2008 and went on to Northeastern University and graduated with a doctorate in pharmacy. He is now a practicing pharmacist at a VA hospital. My daughter graduated in 2014 and she is at her second year in Bridgewater State. She's studying exercise physiology, hoping to go on to be a physical therapist. I started my volunteer career, as I call it, in 1999 as the PTO's president at the South School. The following year, I was elected as a town meeting representative. I've been a town meeting rep for 15 years and I still am. I believe that I've always been fiscally responsible to the town and will always continue to be. I have a degree in psychology, which although I didn't follow that career path, I found it very useful in every possession, in every position I've ever been in. I guess that's my time.
Joe? Thank you, Anita.
My name is Joe McDonough and I'm a lieutenant in a local fire department. I have a master's of public administration from Framingham State. I have two small children, one who's currently in the first grade and one who will be tending Stoughton schools come this fall. Since living in Stoughton, I've coached SOC for the past two years and have been volunteering at school activities. One of the reasons we moved to Stoughton was because of schools. And I am running for the school committee because I want to make sure not only my children but all the children of Stoughton get the education they need to be successful in life.
Thank you. And the first question from Jeff is going to go to Anita.
All right, so obviously, this election season, one of the big issues town-wide is going to be the high school building project. The project itself, well, town meeting members will be asked to approve the project in May. And then the voters will be asked to approve funding for the project in the form of a debt exclusion likely in June. So as a school committee member or as a soon-to-be school committee member if elected, I just would like to hear your thoughts on this project and the committee itself and how the committee is working and your feelings on a new Stoughton high school.
I am a strong, strong supporter of a new Stoughton high school. Like I said, both my kids graduated from Stoughton High School. And for those of you who have had children in the school, you know that they call a building Hogwarts. That's not a good thing. The high school building project itself, and for full disclosure, my husband, Rick, is on the school building committee. The process of the last year has been amazingly precise, in-depth, and complete. They have specked out everything to the nth degree, all the way through costing. The Massachusetts Association of School Buildings is going to fund us up to 56% of the total school cost. If you haven't seen any of the meetings, they're all over the websites. They're on the Stoughton High School site, they're on the town site, there's all the presentations, there's all the meetings that are recorded and you can see everything step by step. The school itself, with the 56% funded from the state, it'll be almost $70 million, around $70 million at the maximum, that the town would have to fund. In my last statement, I made a misstatement in that $200,000 valuation of a house would be about $372 a year. That is actually a $300,000 valuation of your house. It's roughly $1.24 per thousand dollars of your valuation. I strongly urge you to find out all about it and please help us support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Joe. Same question.
Well, as I said in my opening statement, one of the reasons I moved to Stoughton is because of the schools and I knew there was the possibility of a high school coming to town. I'm very much in favor of the high school. I think it'll be a, as it was for me, it'll be something that attracts families to this town. I know a high school doesn't teach children, but it does provide them with the facilities that they need to get the proper education. Currently, there's undersized classrooms, too many kids, not appropriate science labs, facilities for shops, other rooms in the building. With the new high school, they will have the appropriate size, which the state requires in their vetting process to make sure that you have the proper-sized classrooms per student ratio. So I am completely in favor of it. I do understand it could be a tax burden on some people, actually on everybody, because it'll be everybody's increased taxes. But I believe that it will increase the property taxes and make this a desirable town to come to, which will help offset that increase in taxes when you go to sell your house.
Thank you. Erdem?
Same story here. I have two youngsters. One is in eighth grade now, so he's very excited that he'll be able to get into the new building when he's a senior in high school. And likewise, the younger one is in the fourth grade, so he is looking forward to getting in there. So it's a project that's long overdue. It should have been done maybe 10 years ago, but nevertheless, I think it has to be done and it will be done.
Thank you, Erdem. Next question's going to be going to Joe. Jeff?
Well, so in that regard, where you're all in favor of the project, there have been some comments publicly lately criticizing the committee, how it's been put together, its work. So while you're in support of the project, are you in support of the process and how the process has been going so far to get this project moving forward to the point where the town meeting members and soon the voters will be asked to approve it?
Along the lines of, am I in favor of it? The controversy that's come up, I've heard a little bit of rumblings. I don't know what the actual real controversy is, other than certain people being in positions where they're no longer in positions when they're assigned to those positions, being on the building committee is the only thing I've heard about that. In that regards, I don't think it would be a good idea in the middle of a project to swap people out, change people, when you're working towards a goal of something this large. That being said, from my understanding, everything is being overseen by the state. You have to prove why you're doing everything. There's a lot of restrictions to everything. So if that is the concern that people have, that there might be something different happening that shouldn't, I can't speak to that. But I do know the state oversees everything that's going on. And I do think that everything's been going very, very well and it's been, it's moving along very well.
Okay. Erdem?
Well, I heard the same rumblings. I mean, I can tell you my own perspective. At the time the committee was formed, I did have issues with the way town manager, you know, he had the authority and he, the school committee recommended somebody for the position. And then Mike Hartman appointed somebody else and that person didn't go to the meetings and didn't participate in the votes. And then since then, that person has resigned. And the one person who has, the school committee wanted to be on the committee, did get onto the building committee. But in any case, I think the, you know, the committee has worked essentially, done most of the work. And we do need a new high school as soon as possible. So I think it's counterproductive to, you know, rehash the old stuff, argue about it. And I think we just say, you know, this is the best they came up with and we should trust these guys and try to push this through. And then town meetings, you know, some new information comes up, then we deal with it.
Thank you. And Anita?
The Massachusetts Association of School Buildings, the M A S B, has strict guidelines as far as who, as far as people that make up a school building committee should be. The Board of Selectmen originally had that responsibility and they gave the responsibility to the town manager to appoint people from the town or outside the town to that particular committee. There are only three people who actually aren't in the town that were appointed. There's obviously the superintendent of schools is there, the principal of the school is there, Joel Harding, the facilities manager is there. There's another principal from another town who has gone through an M A S B high school. Each position is important and is needed and is restricted by the M A S B in order to partner with the state to be there. Every person brings a certain expertise to that committee and they all contribute and they all vote together. They have to have a quorum, just like any other committee. And they vote on decisions and the decisions move them along step by step. Please go to the sites and see, you can see presentations, they're calling it the dog and pony show, that are be coming around to different areas and different venues in town. And go to see one. Get the most one, the most current one. Thank you.
We have a...
Just a minor correction to Anita's statement. It's not M A S B, it is M S B A. And it is a Massachusetts School Building Authority. And the Massachusetts School Building Authority, I mean, the particular example that I gave said that there will be one representative from the school committee. And the school committee wanted Katie and Okeon to be there. And Mike Hartman appointed somebody else. But that's water under the bridge and I'm in full support of whatever the recommendation committee made. And I also like to mention, I was really impressed. I'm a member of the Lions Club and I went to Lions Club meeting last week and I saw TJ Recupero and the high school principal selling the project. So I'm very pleased to see that and I'm very impressed.
Thank you. We have a third question coming from Jeff and this one goes to Erdem.
All right, one more question on the school building process and then we'll move on to other topics, as there are many. So what elements of the project are most important for you? Items that this building has to include in order for it to fully, I guess, meet the potential of a new high school and what that can offer students? Or, you know, to keep your support? So basically, what are your basic expectations that the building has to have?
I think the, there is an education plan for the high school and the, and the project, as recommended by the building committee, fill those needs for the, meet the education plan. We had a few years ago, N I A S C, I forgot the acronym, the spelling of the, I think that's the National, do you remember Anita what it was? Whatever.
I believe the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. Somebody at home can Google that and fact-check me.
So they came, they did a study, and they have identified a lot of educational needs. And part of it was, you know, the shortcomings of the building. So they didn't say, you know, if you don't get a new high school, you are not going to get accreditation. But they have identified needs like, you know, the accessibility, like, you know, there was one elevator, the classroom organization, the classroom size, the assembly areas, you know, creating a school community. So like I said in the previous debate, the only disappointment I have with the project is that it doesn't have a swimming pool.
Anita?
Dr. Yural is correct in that the education plan is the number-one requirement to partner with the state. And that obviously was very strong. As a matter of fact, the comments were made that that was the educational plan that we submitted was one of the strongest ones that they've seen in a long time. As far as a wish list or must-haves that I see on the school and why we need the school is, number one is the 21st century science labs. We have currently two rooms that they use as labs and the only reason they qualify for a lab is they have sinks in them. I mean, to do science experiments, chemistry and physics, it's just sad that they don't have those right now. But somehow, they make do and they get by with what they have. Another qualification is the arts and the music programs that we have right now at Stoughton High. We are gold medal winners in the state and in New England and even, you know, further than New England. And that has to continue and even improve. Rather than practicing in a closet or behind a stage, they'll have their own room. Language, the foreign language departments, they will have dedicated foreign language departments with computer labs that they can, instructors can listen to you, each individual, as you're pronouncing and speaking and repeating. So I just, the accessibility has to happen. You know, we've gotten by with grandfather for so long, it's time for a new school.
Thank you. Joe?
I agree with Anita. The science is unmasked. It's just the way the world's going, the science, technology. Which brings me to the other topic is the technology. We have to make sure that there are the computers. From my understanding, there's going to be pretty much individual technology devices that they want the children to have over time. Everybody will have their own iPad laptop-type device to learn. So they're planning on having some computer labs, but they need to have smart boards, they need to have plenty of technology to help teach these kids how to excel once they get out of school. Another thing that they have planned for is the collaborative spaces. Instead of just sitting at a desk teaching to children and hammering away at information, they need spaces where they can have work groups and they can work together to have hands-on, because every kid learns different. Not every child can sit here and learn from a book. Some kids work better from working in groups, working in small groups. So I believe by putting those in, which they have planned for, is going to help our children get the education they need.
Okay. Now, that's about the first third of the...
One more question, like, before we do.
One more?
Yeah, one more.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, other than the high school building project, what is the most important issue that the school system faces at this current time? And how do you propose that the committee or the school system deals with it?
Who does that go to?
I'm sorry. This goes to Anita.
Of course. I'm going to pick the budget. Budget's always a hot button and it's always, obviously, very important to fund what your programs and your plans and your, and your education plan. The school building, this high school, I can't speak. The school district budget as presented is going to the FinCom tonight, actually, with a 2.5%, 5.7% increase over last year. In the past years, as a town meeting member, I've seen 4.4, 4.2, 3.9, 4.6% increases. And the majority of that budget is salaries. 80% of the cost of that district is running from salary increases. To keep it at 2.57% is a goal of the superintendent. And she's very, very mindful of the school building coming up, so she's trying to cinch in that belt and keep it as tight and close to the vest as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
As Anita said, I would also agree that the budget is the most difficult thing we're facing in this town, not only on the school side, but with all the capital improvement plans that we currently be talking about in town. So the, it will be difficult for the school to get the money that they need for any additional programs, staff, anything else, if we have to fund several projects at the same time. So we're going to have to keep it at a low, low increase to make up for the money that we just don't see coming in from the, from the town side.
Erdem? I don't disagree. Budget is important, but, you know, as I said at the beginning, I have three priorities. One is the completion, expedient completion of the new high school. The second one is the improved student achievement in Stoughton schools. Right now, we could use substantial improvement in the middle school and West Elementary School. And in the previous debate, I outlined that the West Elementary School, they have a wonderful new principal and I met her. She's a very nice lady and very capable, so I have hopes. But the, the way that the West School students are educated in a certain way, with a more ELL weight, is a concern to me for the non-ELL kids. But, so that's, I always work towards that. And the middle school is, there are some issues there that needs to be addressed in terms of student achievement and curriculum.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to a different part of the debate now. I forgot to mention, by the way, that this debate is sponsored by Snyder-Stoughton each week in the Stoughton Journal and SnyderStoughton.com and also the Stoughton News on Facebook. So check out that group if you haven't gone on there yet. But we've been, for the last 10 years or so, I've introduced something. And every time Jeff and I do it together, we also do the same thing. And that is having the candidates ask the questions rather than Jeff. Jeff gets to take a minute off, relax. And we're going to go in the same order we did before. And the first one will be Joe asking the question. And then after Joe asks the question, Erdem will answer first, then Anita, and then Joe, you'll answer your own question. We'll start that way and then we'll go to the next one. So Joe, you're on.
All right. My question is, what do you feel is the best indicator of the school system's success and why?
There are, there is no one single answer to your question, Joe. If we are looking at the, if we are looking at the, you know, we are trying to attract new families to town and they are, you know, we want to attract more families, so the new families, but they will look at the rankings. So the absolute rankings or the relative rankings. So they could be magazine rankings or the Department of Education rankings. So that one is for attracting new families. The other one is, you know, the happiness of the kids and how well they are learning. So that's another indicator, but that's kind of hard to measure. The fourth, third one is, you know, what is the graduation rate? So you can look at that, what percentage of the kids are not graduating. The third one is what percentage of the kids are completing the MasCor? Like, you know, we have, according to 2014-15 statistics by the Department of Education, we have only 60% of our students completing the MasCor. So there are multiple, multiple way of measuring, so I'll maybe address it later.
Anita?
As far as what's important for a school, one of the reasons I came here, just like Joe, 20 years ago, is because of the school system. And you, for me, I look at what comes out of the school, because I know what I put into a school, in addition to my child, but I expect my child to put the effort in also. You get out of it what you put into it. The graduation list just is starting to come out, as far as where the children are being accepted to in colleges. And the list goes on and on and on. You can see it online, you can see it in the newspaper when they publish it. The schools are everywhere from UMass to Harvard to Northeastern to Northwestern to University of Connecticut. Our kids are getting accepted all over, which gives me a lot of confidence that they're getting the preparation that they need. As far as rankings, it depends where you look. You can see all different kinds of rankings on the same school, depending on where the bias or where the property that you're looking at. If it's in a magazine, you don't know what demographic or what information they're studying. But as far as, if you really want to look dollar for dollar, and this is where you find it, is the dollars that are spent on the children. Stoughton as a whole is under the average, the state average. We spend less than the state average. And yet, we get at the most bang for our buck for those kids with the dollars.
Thank you. Now, Joe, you can answer your own question.
I know there's several ways of, as Erdem had stated, of indicating whether children are successful. And Ms. Hill, college acceptance, test scores. But I think the, my personal opinion on the success rate of a child is if they're moving on to what they want to do. I know it's a difficult thing to achieve, but it's something that can be done through the guidance department or some kind of questionnaire for children when they're leaving. Did they have any issues with getting into the colleges they wanted? What were those issues? Did they have trouble, did they, were there other classes they needed to get into a secondary technical school or a training school for, to become a trade? Any of those factors, I think, is more important, is the most important factor, because the whole purpose of an education is to help a child succeed. It's not about tests, some people aren't good at tests. As Ms. Hill said, the rankings can be construed however they want. I think it's about just getting our children to be successful at what they want to do.
The next question, Erdem, you'll be asking the panel.
My question. Now, I have a question that comprises of 40 parts and 39 subparts.
As long as you can finish in 29 minutes.
Luckily, Anita's first.
Sure.
I have a simple question. Who's the boss of the school superintendent? Because we had confusion about that last debate.
The school superintendent reports to the school committee. In my world, that doesn't mean the school committee is the boss of the superintendent. The superintendent has many responsibilities. She has all her administration. She's in charge of hiring a lot of different principals and in on all the teachers and all of that. School committee is responsible to hire and fire and evaluate the superintendent, which you could, some call that a boss. I don't, I don't choose to go that way, because I don't think we should micromanage a superintendent. She's, they should be qualified for the position and they should do their job and we should trust them to do their job. And we are, as an overseer, communicate with her on a weekly or biweekly basis with the meetings to make sure and follow up on the things, the budget, the hirings, the firings. That's her department and she should run it.
Joe?
I believe the answer to this question depends on how you define a boss. I don't believe the superintendent actually has a boss. I believe she... I believe she has a board of overseers that makes sure that she does what she's supposed to do, but they are not there to tell her how to do her job. They're there to fund programs that she brings to the board, the committee. They are there to maybe try to guide her in certain ways, set policies that try to get things achieved, but they're not there to say, "You have to do this." My interpretation of a boss is someone that says, "This needs to be done, do this. This is how you're gonna do it, this is how it's gonna get done." The school committee isn't, doesn't serve that role. They are there, like I said, to give the finances needed. The superintendent's supposed to surround herself with staff to help her with those things and it is her job to bring those people in, to provide the education for the children, but it's not the school's committee's job to tell her how to educate the children, just to provide her with the money she needs for the resources to achieve it.
And Erdem, you get to answer your own question.
Well, I think Joe is in, I agree with Joe in part because, you know, it's a school, it depends on what you understand by the word boss. So, for superintendent, obviously, it wouldn't be like the McDonald's worker doing the work and being the supervisor for the McDonald's worker. But, school committee is responsible for the superintendent's, the quality of work the superintendent provides. Everybody has a boss. And, I mean, I worked as a top professional in two corporations. I had a PhD and I was told, I was given goals, like, you know, you have to produce this much income. In my case, I had to go get research contracts, or you have to produce these kind of results, concrete, measurable and challenging results. And then you sit with your boss every once in a while, say, you know, whether you meet those goals, how are you meeting those goals? And how can you, how can I help you to, you know, meet those goals? Or do we need to modify the goals? So, I think everybody in this world has a boss. So, I have a boss and a wife, she's also my boss.
Thank you. Anita, it's your turn to grill the other candidates.
Not so much grilling. As I said, I have a psychology degree, so the answer to my question is really not gonna have a right or wrong answer, of course. And it's just, it's my way of seeing further inside a person. How would you explain to someone considering it, what it's like to run for school committee? I'm referring to being an elected official.
That goes to Joe?
That goes to Joe.
Sorry.
Very time consuming, very difficult. You see, you see where a lot of people stand on a lot of views. You have a lot of people, I believe, trying to achieve the same goals, but different ways of getting there. You have to be able to have an answer to explain why your views are the way they are and how you're trying to achieve what you're trying to achieve. A lot of things you do are compromises. Sometimes you want to get things done and you don't have the resources to do them. Sometimes you wish there were other ways to do it. And this is all stuff that you have to explain to people as you're running and you have to find out answers, answers that they are happy with to solve the issues that they want solved.
Erdem?
Just a clarifying question. Anita, you mean running for the school committee or serving for this?
No, running.
Running. For me, it's fun because my 13-year-old in eighth grade, he's taking government class in social science. So, he loves all these presidential debates and he also loves helping me with my campaign. And I'm a straight shooter, so I'm saying things that I have said six years ago. So, certain opinions have changed, I have evolved, I have learned from my mistakes. But to me, it's mostly fun.
Anita, I get to answer your own.
Well, I said I was a town meeting member and being a town, or being elected as a town meeting member, you really don't have to campaign. You get signatures and you get on the ballot and hopefully people vote for you and voila, you're a town meeting member. But this being called a political position, which I guess it is because you have to campaign and you have debates and you have to sort of take platforms, it was really hard for me because I'm normally a quiet person, I'm not a politician, I don't like politicians because I don't believe what they say. They promise you things that they can't bring, they can't follow through on. That was the hardest for me. I don't have an agenda, I'm open-minded, I make my own decisions based on facts and I would strongly recommend that anyone considering it, make sure that they have their own reasons.
Very good. We go to the eighth question, we go back to Jeff. We gotta back out of the deep freeze.
So, reading the Boston Globe this morning, former Governor Michael Dukakis and former Massachusetts State Senate President Thomas Birmingham co-authored an opinion piece in the Globe advocating for the state to revive the requirement for students to pass a US History MCAS in order to graduate from high school. And so, their article started, "A basic purpose of American public education is to teach students how to exercise the rights and responsibilities associated with active citizenship in a democracy. But national testing shows that just isn't happening. To change that, Massachusetts should revive the requirement that public school students pass a US History MCAS test to graduate from high school." So, I'd like to just ask what your thoughts on something like that is and if you would be in favor of increasing the MCAS demands to graduate high school or just having some sort of basic civics test in order to receive your diploma? So...
This goes to Joe first.
We'll start with you, Joe.
It always goes to Joe.
As for having another test, I don't agree with it. I went through school, I graduated without an MCAS. I was one of the last classes without it. I feel I've been successful. I, I understand why they're doing testing. It's good to get an idea that all children are doing well, see where they stand, but to add another test on top of it and to make it a requirement for graduation, I would not support it.
Okay. Erdem?
Well, you're asking this to a person who hated history when he was a kid, but I haven't read the article, Jeff, but I'm strongly in favor of that because history is the subject that ties us together, you know, our national history. And also, you know, when I was a kid, they used to say, "History repeats itself." Did I, "History repeats itself." Now, the other part of that, as an example, in Turkey, I graduated high school in Turkey and it was a requirement to pass the history test, just not the whole, you know, Turkish history goes back to, you know, long centuries ago, but just to, you know, history for the Republic of Turkey. So, that was a requirement. And also, I am a naturalized citizen of the United States and to become a citizen, I had to study US history. And I learned a lot and you understand more about the people and more importantly, you know, you understand like the things like the Constitution or how is the three arms of the government work? So, I think those are really important and nobody should leave home without knowing those.
Okay. Anita?
I'm really torn as to add more testing to the students. There is already a lot of tests, SAT tests for kids going to college. They have to pass their courses in order to graduate. MCAS is a great idea. I grew up in a town close to New York State and I'm sure everybody may be familiar with the New York State schools, they have regents that they have to test, but that's in every year and the children are used to it, but they don't teach to the test. They teach the course requirements for the grade level. Therefore, the tests are an evaluation of the teaching of those courses. And I kind of think they're using the MCAS right now as an evaluation of the schools instead of the students because they're teaching to the test, it forces the teachers to teach to the test and I don't agree with that. It should be a well-rounded education, grade level appropriate, so that each year along the way, you can see where the students are at and those that need more help will get it and those that are getting it, move on. I don't, I obviously like history and English and math and they should be strong in them, but they should be strong in them without having a test, an MCAS test for it. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Next question's going to...
I think Joe had a rebuttal.
You had a rebuttal?
Just an added comment. When I said I didn't have tests, obviously, everybody has tests like Ms. Hill said. I think that the teachers know best at what the students are doing. They're giving them tests to evaluate how they're doing, is going along. I don't, I don't find it necessary to have another high-stakes test and a child that doesn't pass history can't graduate high school. I find that to be crazy when they went through 12 years of school and passed maybe 100% on every test, but they fail one test in history and they can't graduate. I don't think it's appropriate to have a high-stakes test.
And just a friendly amendment to what Joe said, maybe it's in the different direction, sorry, Joe.
It's fine.
You know, like the MCAS test, the kids need to pass those, the current MCAS test, the kids have to pass those in order to graduate high school, but they take it in the 10th grade and if they don't pass, they take it again, they take it again. I think it's really a great idea to have some kind of a uniform sieve, so to speak, to make sure that important subjects are taught and they are the same measures across the, across the state. And the history test, when they are doing it in the eighth grade or first year of high school, so that could be done then, you don't have to wait to the end of the high school.
Okay. Next question's gonna go to Erdem first. Jeff?
All right. So, this question's more of like the minutia of actually the school committee business rather than broad questions, you know, in terms of education. So, one of the issues at school committee meetings lately, if you've been watching the meetings, is what's in the minutes, how they're kept and how quickly they're approved by the committee, which has differed greatly over time. How, you know, how quickly these minutes are approved and posted for the public to be able to see. So, I would just get to, like to get your thoughts on the situation of minutes and posting the minutes and again, what's in them.
Erdem, you first.
Well, the minutes of the meeting is the record of the meeting and the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law is clear that, you know, you have to have the minutes. It doesn't say, "When do you have to have the minutes?" It should be within a reasonable period of time. And it also says, you know, it has to have a subject of what is discussed, give a flavor of what is being discussed and have a list of what's in there. The, as I said, it doesn't say when they have to be approved, but if somebody asks for it and if they are not approved, then the school committee has the responsibility to provide unapproved minutes. Say these are subject to approve and approve as soon as possible. So, last year, when I was running for reelection, my opponent made a big deal about the minutes, you know, why they were late, they were late for, by a few months. So, I mean, to me, it's not an important issue. Now, I think there is an issue that the minutes for the executive session, school committee entering into executive session to investigate Superintendent Rizzi, still haven't been approved. I mean, it's just a two-minute meeting, just write the minutes and approve them. So, that was, I believe, May 10, 2015, no, March 10, so it's like one year ago. So, I think, I haven't been watching school committee meetings, so I don't know if that's what you're talking about or what.
Oh, we can go back for follow-ups, but...
Anita?
I think you're referring to what's actually printed in the minutes as opposed to attached to the minutes as an attachment. And yes, open meeting law does address what, generally what's supposed to be in the meeting minutes. Just to bring you up to speed, back in December, we lost our recording secretary, she quit and it was very hard. We advertised and we looked all around and we've been getting pieces together, we've been taking our own minutes from executive sessions. We do finally, just, we had an interim secretary, they lasted, I think, two meetings, but that person has then left. And just last week, we hired another recording secretary. In the interim, we've had another secretary from Town Hall. I don't need to mention her name, but she's been doing the minutes from the tapes. And we do have all the actual meetings up to date, we've approved up through February 23rd, don't quote me. And those have been approved, I believe, 41 votes because of the contention of something either being attachment or not attachment or being summarized or not summarized in the minutes. That's an ongoing issue and it may continue to be an ongoing issue. It's all an interpretation of the open meeting laws when it refers to the minutes themselves.
Joe?
I have watched several of the past school committee meetings. I have noticed that there are a lot of issues with the minutes. Like Ms. Hill said, the interpretation of whether something should be submitted or not, attached or not. I feel that they, without a secretary there, it is very difficult to get them done in a timely fashion, but they should be done as quickly as possible. The, anything that is discussed and that is relevant to the meeting or anything that's handed out should, in my opinion, be put in the minutes. I know there was a question last school committee meeting about something being summarized, paraphrased, it was cut and pasted and I know that that was denied at first and they're gonna go back to adjust that because that's a slippery slope to get down to when you're not using someone's actual words and you're paraphrasing stuff, whether it be a quote pulled from somewhere or anything else. So, that being said, I, I think it seems to be going in the right way, but anything that is handed out, I think should be attached in the minutes.
Erdem, you want to ask?
Yeah. I just wanted to add two points. One is Anita mentioned that it's hard to find a school committee recording secretary. I can tell you why, because the budget is only $3,500. Can you imagine going to all those meetings and then going back home and typing all for $3,500 a year? I found a good, great school committee recording secretary. We had her for one meeting, but it was more expensive than we are willing to pay, so we couldn't hire her. Superintendent said, "We don't have the money to hire her." Now, the minutes, going back to the issue Joe mentioned, the minutes are the minutes of the committee. My perspective was, when I was the chair, is, you know, minutes for everybody, so let's include everything in there, whoever wants to include something in there unless it's not the truth, because minutes reflect what the meeting is and the meeting is on the video. So, I don't understand what's the argument about that issue, including certain things in the minutes.
Any more to that?
I just wanna, just a real quick, it's not necessarily a rebuttal, but the issue is essentially from a statement, a prepared statement being brought to the meeting and not being passed out prior to the meeting, it wasn't on the agenda, and that's where the contention comes into interpreting the open meeting law.
Joe, did you ask something else?
No.
Okay. All right, let's go back to the next question.
Good. All right. So, one of the roles that the school committee has is evaluating the superintendent and I was hoping to get your thoughts on the evaluation process and best practices in that regard.
Anita, you first.
Of course. Actually, we're going through the end of the year evaluation process right now. I went through, I came on board in October and went through budgets and went through hiring a school business manager and went through negotiations with a couple of the existing unions. And we are now, like I said, at the end of the year cycle, starting evaluation for the superintendent. It's very prescribed again by the, by the state, there's state guidelines, there's goals and standards which are set in the beginning of the year by the school committee and they were set. And then, the superintendent is responsible to report in mid-year and at the end of the year as to where she is working towards the completion or not, as far as she's gotten towards the goals. And it's very prescribed and you grade her, so to speak, proficient, not proficient, needs improvement and... improvement, and then you have comments to explain your decision. And those votes are passed in to the chairman. The chairman will put them all together and come up with one final grade, so to speak, for the superintendent's evaluation.
Joe?
I would say the process as it is is not ideal. The school committee should have some way of setting goals for the superintendent. I know that the superintendent sets goals for the school system. The state determines how the whole review process is done. Superintendent will set goals. The school committee does get to approve those goals, so they can try to steer her in a certain way to work towards certain goals. Ideally, it would be nice if the school committee could actually set a goal or two for the superintendent, but you can't change that. So it's nice that you can at least approve the goal she's working towards and she has to report intermittently to provide evidence that there is progress being made towards those goals and then at the end of the year to provide evidence that she has actually completed those goals.
Erdem?
I think superintendent evaluation is perhaps one of the most important roles of the school committee. And it is prescribed by the law how and when to do it. But in terms of practice, in my opinion, we had problems, we still have problems with the superintendent evaluation, and I will tell you why. There is a point in superintendent's contract which says, "The goals shall be set, mutually agreeable goals shall be set for the superintendent." So the school committee comes up with one goal and the superintendent comes with another one. And then superintendent say, "Well, I don't agree." Then you cannot impose...school committee cannot impose that goal. So there was an opportunity to modify that part, but when I realized that the superintendent was drawing more money than the contract allowed him, I asked for, you know, her to pay the school system back. I said, "Well, I'll be willing to forgive that if you agree to change that mutually agreeable to..."confering with the school committee, but she didn't. So I see my time is running out. I'll say the rest in the rebuttal.
Quickly, this is a five-second answer.
Unless any rebuttals are...all right, so...
Can I rebut my own?
No.
A question that you might not answer, but I'll try. I'll try anyways. The voters of Stoughton will be selecting two members for the school committee on April 5th. In addition to yourself, as I'm assuming that each of you would support yourself, who else should the Stoughton voters be considering for that second spot on the school committee?
I feel the Stoughton voters should be selecting who they think aligns with their views the best, who they think they will do the best job for their children, who will help the children get the education that they need.
Very political answer.
Anybody else?
Are you a fireman?
Does anybody have an actual answer?
No.
Okay.
All right, well, it was worth a shot.
It was worth a shot.
Good try.
Jeff, we always try that, but it is worth a shot.
I would want you to be elected, Jeff. How's that?
All right, here we go. This is the closing, 30 seconds, folks. And it's 60 seconds, actually. And we start with Joe. Go ahead.
I'm asking for your vote because I believe I will be a good addition to the school committee. I am an independent thinker who will stand up for what I believe is right, but work respectfully with other committee members in making decisions to improve our school system. I am aware of the fiscal constraints that we have and a possible financial burden as a town we are facing with all the capital improvements we need. Being a father, taxpayer, and public employee, I feel I can look at all sides of an issue when trying to make a decision that will not only affect our children's education, but also our families as residents. Please consider me for one of your two votes this April. Thank you.
Okay. Anita?
I'd like to thank Mark and Jeff and everyone at SMAC for tonight, for the opportunity to be here tonight, even though I don't want to be a politician. Since I was appointed on October 6th, I've been on negotiating teams for two of the schools participating unions. I've participated in the approval of the 2017 school budget. I've been on the search committee for a new school business manager. And I've participated in a mid-cycle evaluation of the superintendent. I'm also on the triennial plan, district improvement plan, and I would like to continue the work that I've started. Please give me one of your two votes. Thank you.
Erdem?
Good evening. Once again, Stoughton is at the crossroads between the paths toward a good or corrupt government. We must get Stoughton back on the right track. Our Senator Brian Joyce had multiple encounters with the Ethics Commission. His office was recently raided by the FBI and IRS agents. Our acting town manager has been criminally charged with obstructing liquor investigation and is facing potential jail time. On the other hand, our beloved police chief resigned, saying, "I don't trust them. I believe they have no integrity and they lie. They are deceitful." In order to get Stoughton back on the right track, you must elect a board and committee members who will demand excellence and keep the top administrators accountable. I'm the only one among school committee candidates with a proven track record and therefore I ask for one of your votes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for the great questions. And I want to thank Michael Wigder for the timekeeping. Good job. Michael Hammond on the camera, nice job. C.J. Mullin and David Young in the control center, thank you very much. If you missed the debate, you can tune in. If you just go to stoughtontv.com, you'll have the schedule on there. And don't forget, when you want to know the election results, there's only one place to go. You've got to go to Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 28, April 5th at 8:30. And Jeff, you're going to be doing the stuff?
I will.
Jeff Cronkite will be there anchoring the results. So that'll be a lot of fun. So I want to remind people that the selectmen's debate will be coming up next.
If you're watching live.
If you're watching live. If you're not, then just never mind that.
Shall we participate in the selectmen's debate, too?
And so this is going to be a lot of fun. And I really appreciate everybody. And I want to thank Jeff and I want to thank Mark. Thank you very much, Mark. You're welcome. It's nice to have you here. And just don't forget to read Snyder-Stoughton every Friday in the Stoughton Journal. And if you're on Facebook, you should of course be liking the SMAC page, but also go on to Stoughton News and check it out.
And make sure you vote on Tuesday, April 5th.
Well, if you don't vote, and we'll find out, by the way, then don't say a word. Don't complain about anything if you don't vote. Get in the booth, vote for the Snyder of your choice, but vote. Oh, I'm not on the ballot, am I?
Tuesday, April 5th, there's three candidates for the school committee, three candidates vying for two seats, and there's three candidates for selectmen vying for a single seat. So again, three candidates for school committee, running for two seats, three on the selectmen's side, running for a single seat. Make sure you vote.
And, you know, usually 15% of the people vote, so 85% have no say. Make a say. Vote.
All right, thanks for tuning in.